Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Mayor Philseth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fein.
Here.
Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Niss. Five present.
The meeting will come to order and the first item on the agenda, or two items, conferences with city attorney related to existing litigation and multiple potential cases. Let's see. Looks like we have a speaker on item 1A. Herb, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening or afternoon. I question whether it's appropriate to be going into closed session to discuss the subject of the content of what scope for a police auditor purview when in practice over the 13 years since the council first voted to create an independent police auditor, the practice and timing of reports has changed. And at one point, the city manager, or rather, one of his lowest ranking professional staff, not the manager or the assistant manager or deputy manager, but an assistant to the manager, let counsel know that under the chart of the city manager is the one who gets to investigate and it's not departments under his purview and it's not the council's business to have someone that reports directly to the council. Yet that was the original intent of the council and under the first city manager when benedist, that's effectively the way it worked. Over time, reports became more and more delayed. And in terms of contracts, the last two contracts the council, all the contracts the council approved till the last two, in 2012, they approved the contract where the staff report said it would be for three years, up to three years. But the contract itself is presented to the council, only mentioned the first year and didn't have any indication of how to and who it was that would continue it for more than one year. It went for a second year and in 2014, the council approved a similar contract for three years, which was to end August 30th, 2015 for the first year and then somehow might be extended. Since that time, the council has seen no contracts for the independent police auditor. If staff believes it's their right to approve these contracts because of their dollar amount, then they have an obligation every six months to report to the council those contracts they've approved. For three fiscal years, you received no reports allegedly due to an oversight on staff's part. At the end of last year, you did receive a report for three years, which would be six of the six-month reports, and none of them indicated a contract that went beyond the third year of the previous approval, which would have been August 30th, 2017. You since received two more six-month reports and again, no police auditor contract. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will move that the council render closed session.
Second.
Could you vote on the board, please? And that passes five to one with councilmember Niss opposed. Actually, is that you, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't realize you were going to vote on both of these together. You did that pretty fast, but.
Care to speak here? No vote?
Yeah, so I'm voting no on 1A. I think if we're talking about human HR-specific issues, that we could discuss that in closed session, but we generally have policies regarding like scope of a contract in open session. I think there is some public interest in this based on some of the past activities. So I would suggest that we maybe limit the closed session discussion tonight to any specifics about particular people. I think those might be good examples, but I don't think they're necessarily the core of whatever policy we decide on. Maybe we could have the policy come back as an action item. So I don't know what our process here, because we typically don't have no votes unclosed session. I wonder if I can make a motion to that effect and see if there's a second.
Why don't we have the closed session discussion and then we'll figure, why don't we have the discussion after we do the closed session?
Um.
No, you can't make a motion. We already voted let's go.
Yeah, I mean, it's the whole point of a closed session versus open session transparency.
Right.
So what is the process then?
Thank you. We're going to go into closed session discussion number one and 1A and the discussion of what should be enclosed and not closed session, we may be able to touch briefly on. To the extent it's agendized.
But prior to that, there's a special veterans recognition event from 3:30 to 4:30 in the faraway. So we really encourage you to come out, especially if you've served your country in the service. You have relatives who've served, you support the military. We just had Fleet Week last week in the city. It was a beautiful, beautiful week to be out there. Saw a great Prince Band, saw just a great, great, great time in the city with the Fleet Dan and the Blue Angels. There is a, five o'clock is a study, youth study session, Palo Alto hearing on Tefra, hearing for the Bowman School, public hearing, reach building, energy code update, and then approval of the construction in the amount for Highway 101 pedestrian bicycle overpass, capital improvement projects, and construction management services to Highway 101. And then the pedestrian bicycle overpass project and the agreement between the county of Santa Clara and the city of Palo Alto to provide grant funding for Highway 101 pedestrian bicycle overpass project, and adoption of a resolution joining the RHNA subregion. And then, of course, November the 11th is Veterans Day. So we had Columbus Day last week, and Veterans Day, and so we were off on Monday. Now we're Veterans Day, Monday, November the 11th. And we honor our veterans, and that is important always. I'm live, as the mayor is coming out. I see my colleague here for the Palo Alto Weekly, Janae Shaner is excited because UCLA, he was at the UCLA game on Thursday, and it was quite, it was quite an event for him. He was very excited. He was there with the little bears. What are their names? That's right. What are their names again? Joe, Joe Bruin and his girlfriend is, and now Josephine, but Joe Bruno was theirs. The Bruin faithful were in attendance at the Stanford football game on a special Thursday night game, and you heard that on KZSU Stanford. And it's very special for him, not so special for us, but special for him. And we're glad he's happy as the Pac-12 drama continues. I'm Vince Larkin, he's saying that UCLA is the best 2-15 team in the nation. Well, here's the best city council in the nation. It's coming up on the best radio station in the nation, KZSU. It looks like we're about to be, Mayor Phil Self is calling us all to order after that closed session, and we're waiting for them to make this happen, this study session with the Human Relations Commission. So you have some different faces up there, and they are going to share the dais with the council, and there's a lot of relating going on. We're going to have that live, the council and the Human Relations Commission. I'm Vince Larkin, you're listening to Democracy in Action, gavel to gavel coverage of the Palo Alto City Council on 90.1 KZSU Stanford. We're live and ready to go here. It's getting close to about 6:30 now, and we're going to hear the issues that both have in common, both these distinguished bodies of Palo Alto, the Human Relations Commission and the Palo Alto City Council. We are waiting. And don't forget that big meeting here tomorrow night with the GUP. That's a big, big event. That's going to be, will probably be packed here at night. So that is a big, big event. Here is the Stanford GUP Santa Clara County supervisors here live in Palo Alto. That's tomorrow night. And everyone is getting into position, and we're about to get going. As, no one is in Halloween costume, but there may be, they're thinking about their Halloween costumes. I don't know, but that's, that's coming up. And that is on a Thursday. Halloween is on a Thursday this year, so be careful driving because there are going to be lots of kids out there. So Thursday, the 31st. And we've got the World Series tomorrow, which is exciting. The Houston Astros, led by Stanford's A.J. Hinch, the manager, a great player for Stanford, won a college World Series, and a great manager of the Houston Astros versus the Washington, the Washington Nationals. Last time they were, Washington was in the World Series, was 1935, and they were the Washington Senators. So that's exciting for them. So maybe everyone in, something that everyone in Washington can agree upon, they have a good baseball team. All right. I'm Vince Larkin, gavel to gavel coverage. We're live, and we're waiting for this great body to get underway. Here we go.
So the next item on the agenda is a study session with the Human Relations Commission. And so, welcome. And is there a presentation?
Yes, there sure is.
Please proceed.
First, I'd just like to say I'm a product of Catholic schools, so sometimes the nuns used to tell me that the answer to all questions is in the question and just add the word "holy." So if you are asked about what is human relations, it's the study of how humans relate. I'll leave out the holy, since this is a public meeting in a different context. But I'm really happy to be here and to introduce the team. We do have some absences. Pastor Coloma Smith just became a father, and he's got a young son. Darryl Savage is out, and Chi Fang Shu is a biotech executive, so they're out today. But our commission has actually three chairs, not just one. Darryl Savage and also Valerie Stinger are former chairs of the commission. So there's a pretty long history of understanding to guide us in how we relate to the city council. a pretty long history of understanding to guide us in how we relate to the city council. We also have with us Patty Rigir and Stephen Lee tonight, so we're really happy to have those members with us. I'm also a chemical engineer, so I just bring a little bit philosophy with me and try to talk to you a little bit about how I see these members and how I see our mission. One of the courses I took at Notre Dame was in the study of catalysts, and each of these members in their own right is a catalyst. They're helping to even the playing field for a number of groups within our community, and to help those groups, and they're catalyzing conversations and action steps and interactions with persons who have more power than us to help us. A catalyst is something that lowers the activation energy, it helps groups to be effective. One of the principles of catalysis is that catalysts don't get used up. So our mission is not necessarily to stay in an issue forever, but it is, it is to catalyze an interaction and to help it, and then to give it off. And you'll see some good examples of that, as former Chair Stinger will talk about the LGBTQ work that they're doing and how they do it, but that is a very important principle. The other important principle about catalysts is that not every catalyst works with every reaction. So we're all different, and hopefully the selection that you guys have done in looking through resumes and looking through past experience, conducting interviews, gives you a broader connection to the community through us, so that we can be helpful to many groups, not just groups that we're interested in. I happen to be an ombudsman, so I'm interested in long-term health care for seniors. I'm also a court hearing officer, I work in the field of mental health. So those two things are things that come pretty easy to me. But others have different connections to the community, and I think that's the important thing to learn about. We had a very large study session over the summer months in which we came up with initiatives, and we have leaders of each of those initiatives, and that's some of the things that we're going to communicate with you about today. The HRC mission is something that's published. I think we're enabling conversations, enhancing inclusion. Those are the end results of the chemical reaction that we're intending to bring about. There's a charge of the HRC, that's something that is in the statutes, and I think if there's someone that doesn't benefit from public or private opportunities, that's something that we're looking to address. The accomplishments for the 2018 and 2019, I'm not sure, do we have someone's going to speak to that? Okay, go right ahead Valerie.
The core responsibilities that fall to the HRC are the human services resource allocation process. And through this process, we have the opportunity to set priorities for our service dollars, for the budget that we get from council, to help a variety of groups in the community. We try to satisfy basic needs, homelessness, seniors, special needs, and we look to groups like downtown streets teams, Cassie, Dreamcatchers, Vista Center for the Blind, to do the legwork. So we spend some part of our year visiting, becoming familiar with the work they do, with evaluating that work, and then we go through the budget allocation process. It's probably the hardest thing we do, and it's also probably the most satisfying, one of the most satisfying things we do. The human service resource budget comes from the city, and the other part of our work is CDBG.
So this past year, we started the first year of a two-year cycle for CDBG funding from the federal government, and we provided the council with $650,000 of funding recommendations to fund eight different agencies. This year, we also saw a change to the emerging needs fund. Every year, the council allocates typically around $50,000 so that agencies in our community, if they have an emergency or a critical need that comes up, or why is this, that's not anticipated for, they can apply for those funding sources. And so the update that we made this past year, and thank you to the council for approving those changes, we're adding a third category called emerging needs, which basically means that if an existing need is out there, but a new approach has been identified, then folks can apply for funding to fund new approaches to existing needs. And that came about primarily because we found that over the years, the fund was just undersubscribed. In a typical year, 10,000 out of the 50,000 would be allocated, and so we thought we'd add a third priority level category to enable those funds to be used to support some great nonprofits in our community who are doing great work, but who could not otherwise obtain funding for new and innovative approaches to existing problems.
Next slide is listing core responsibilities, and in large part, it's project work and also liaison work. Each of us is a liaison to specific groups in the community, we attend their meetings, we try to understand their needs and try to be helpful to them. Sometimes they present at our meetings. I was a former mediator, so I'm part of the Palo Alto mediation program in the past, and it's a wonderful way to get introduced to Palo Alto, working with that group, their first rate in terms of their skillset. They have great training, and they're an underutilized resource, but it's something that I think is encouraging day-to-day when you see the members that are interested. When people come to our community, they like to be part of that, and they get the great training, and then they take that step and move forward. I think Lydia Ku is also ICU there, or a former mediator in that program, so we're very happy to work with that. I'll ask Valerie to take on the next slide of accomplishments.
So our work in the past year fell into sort of two buckets. One was fostering community conversations, and the other was supporting an inclusive community. And in that regard, we had a sample of activities that supported gender equity, gender identity, and senior well-being. You can see them listed here. We also are active in healthy cities, healthy communities, and initiatives started by the council. And I just wanted to emphasize again that a lot of our work comes from initiatives that come from council, and that's very helpful to us. That network of agencies that laid the foundation for some work that's going on, that will be initiated this year in fiscal year 2019, 2020. In this, I'm going to move on to the next slide, looking ahead. Our efforts this year are spread across a timeline. There are some efforts that we're going to work to completion this year that have been going on for a year or two, some that will start this year, but we have defined endpoints, and then some that are exploratory. The continuing work, the LGBTQ plus summit and CDAL work, again, came out of the council resolution in December 16, 2016. Other elements that we've worked on in the past, religious freedom, sanctuary, cities, have been completed, except we did do it, and we need to note that we did have a working session this year in which we invited Supervisor Semidian and debated or listened to discussion of the council, this, sorry, the Board of Supervisors' consideration of a resolution to cooperate with ICE more fully. We voted against that, and subsequently, the Board of Supervisors also voted to support our immigrant population. Some of the new projects, or some, I do want to take a second also to talk about the LGBTQ sum, plus summit. That was an example of something we did where we used, relied on a lot of partnerships to have an effective outcome. We now have a cafe every, once a month at Avenidas, and we are going to have county funding. So we have a lot of groups that are active in it. We'll be able to turn over a leadership position to a liaison position for the commission. Some of the things we're taking on this year are to support the census count, to support youth vaping, and we'll be doing that with community, with healthy cities, healthy communities. And we hope to look at human service needs assessments to reassess our priorities for the fundings that we do. An exciting part of what we do is exploratory work so that we have a foundation for the following year.
One, hi, I'm Patty Rigir. This is looking ahead, and seniors, we are going to be working on some seniors issues. Children, which is one of my priorities, is I would like to be working on getting our city to be a child-friendly city. It's through the UN, and I'd like to be a pilot. Individuals with special needs, we've been working with Parks and Rec about that. Immigrants, mental health, gender equity, public safety, climate change, public health, and also, one of the issues too, was isolation and inclusion. And one of the things that we just did is we had a movie about Wonder, and that brought about 80 people to the park, and we'd really like to bring the communities back together and start doing, and Lydia was there and spoke, and that's to address people feeling isolated and inclusion.
So now, this is the time that we invite the council input on our major focus areas, on our process, especially how we go about doing what we do, what's the best way to move things forward in terms of our communications to council, and the manner in which we can fulfill the mandate, you know, how do we put ourselves in the position we should be to be supportive of the city council. Mayor?
Thank you. We now return to council for questions and comments and discussion, and a light from Councilmember Ku, followed by council member, followed by Vice Mayor Fine, and then Councilmember DeBois.
I didn't realize I was the first one, but thank you. So firstly, I wanted to say thank you very much to the Human Relations Commission. You do a very important, heart-tugging job, and it's not easy with the many things that we have to be cognizant to, and in a delicate way, still providing dignity to everybody that's involved. So thank you very much for that. I did wanted to, as you, I'm also liaison to the Palo Alto Youth Council, and last year, they had come forth with a survey that they did at their school locally here in the high schools about vaping, and, you know, there were some numbers that were pretty daunting in terms of number of teens and youth that are vaping, so I'm glad that you are taking this up. At the same time, I was wondering if you might know that we already have ordinances in place for tobacco products? So it sounds like you do. I guess in that regard, I guess it would be nice to, for you to find out as you're talking to the community, how we can strengthen those ordinances, in what way we can do it, and what county is doing. One of the things that the youth are saying is, the youth commi, the youth council, the Palo Alto Youth Council is doing, is that they're looking to do another survey as well as to come up with educational materials to educate the children, I mean, educate the youth, their peers. So if that's something that, I guess I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to bring the two committees, the youth council and the HRC committees together, so that you're actually working collaboratively, since the group that we want to impress on most is the youth, since there seems to be a larger and larger population that are vaping, and they don't realize what it's doing to their brains at that age. So I'm hoping that we could somehow, some way, work it so that the two committees are working together. Also, also, I just want to mention that when I attended, along with Councilmember Cormac, the Santa Clara County Health Department's Hooked Conference, which is about vaping, they also spoke about tobacco, a tobacco prevention toolkit and curriculum that is led by Donnie, Donnie, Dr. Bonnie Halpern Felcher. So I was wondering if that might be something that, someone, or a place of resources for you in order to come up with, to use some of their toolkit materials. And what was kind of disturbing to me at the conference itself was that there was a teen panel, and I believe every member of that panel mentioned that when they reported it to their teachers and school administrators, they didn't find that they were heard and that nobody did anything. Or the penalties or the violations were really not looked into. So I think in that aspect, you know, I feel that, where is the failure there? So that's on vaping, and I really hope that we can work something more collaboratively with the youth, since they're the biggest population that we're really trying to help. Then I'd also like to say congratulations on movie night, it was actually really fun. It was interesting to see more of the very young and their parents versus the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, so that was kind of interesting. And I think outreach might be something that we want to talk about and see if there's a better way to do it so that we get a larger group. It's something that I'll definitely bring back to the youth council to see if they can help. Lastly, in terms of being more exclusive and looking at all the different age groups, I want to say thank you to the youth council, I mean, to the commission, and for having me at your retreat, where I saw the residents in town here who are, who have developmental disabilities, and how inclusive you all were, and how you heard them. So thank you for that. It's something that we want to know about, which is why I'm also very grateful to bring forward, I want to take this opportunity to bring forward on behalf of Angie Foster, and she's mom to Chase, who's age 10, who has Phelan McDermott Syndrome, which is a rare genetic disorder and autism, and Mayor Phil Sev has declared October 22nd World Phelan McDermott Syndrome Awareness Day. So I want to thank you for that, Mayor Phil Sev, for bringing awareness to this syndrome. I want to hear your feedback on what council can support you on, so I just want to point out all these points that are matters towards a healthy city and healthy community. So I'm here to listen to what you have to provide. Thank you.
Did you want us to respond contemporaneously with folks' comments or wait until the end?
Yeah, how about now?
Okay. To address some of the comments that Councilmember Ku mentioned, the commission has already reached out to the youth commission, youth council's staff advisor, to talk about our mutual interest in working on vaping. You know, this was something that we saw them do in their joint meeting with the council last spring, and so we really brought it up because we were hearing from youth in our community, as well as parents, about the need to address teen vaping. And hopefully, you, in receipt of the letter that the commission drafted, and the ask that the commission asked the council to dedicate staff time and resources to address it. I think the commission feels that it's a community-wide effort that requires the intention not only of the score district and PTA, but the city as well. In terms of, you know, policy enforcement, we acknowledge the existing statutes on the book, but when we look around to neighboring communities, we see that there is still room to improve in terms of policies on the book, as well as other things we can do in terms of education and funding services that either help prevent teens from using these vaping criminals or help treat. So there's multiple hats that the city can, can wear in terms of helping to address the teen vaping issue, along with other community partners. So we've already met with the youth council, and we're hoping to connect them with some folks in the score district who are very interested in doing their own survey. So the extent that we can empower the youth council to utilize, you know, resources beyond their ability would be fantastic. So we've already begun outreach efforts to them and other members of the community.
Stephen, why don't I go ahead and give Stephen, why don't I go ahead and give some comments too? First of all, it's very rare, but moms in my street have invited me over for coffee and home baked pastry after we took up the issue of vaping. It's on top of a lot of people's minds. I think the Time Magazine article, the daily headlines at the present moment have over 1,000 cases of severe lung disease, 33 deaths in 49 states. And one of the real problems with this issue is no one knows why. No one knows the mechanism of why that has happened and why it continues to happen. I'm particularly bothered. I have young children, and one's middle school age, and when I walk into any gas station and I see Juul with a huge sign and a huge set of products out there, I just wonder to myself, you know, who in the world let that happen? I mean, it was the federal government, and they failed us, and we have a community health problem. I do not want children in our community to die or to have serious lung illness simply for vaping. And I guess I felt that the issue was very acute when I listened to ACS. They presented their slides, and, you know, the action step that I'm wondering why it hasn't happened is I think, you know, these products should be taken off the shelves. They're dangerous. There's no explanation for why people are dying, no explanation for why people are getting serious lung illness. And you've got a third of high school students who have vaped in the last month. They vape with black market products, they vape with, you know, sold products from Juul and others. It's a, it's a public health problem, and it's acute. And when I saw that, I said, hey, you know, our youth is being taken advantage of, and they're being sold a book of goods, and there's, there's no scientific study that says that these products are safe. And why are they being sold in gas stations? You know, why does, why does somebody walk into a gas station and say, hey, I'll have a Juul, and then I'll give it to my buddy who's in middle school? This is not something that I think should go on in our community, and that's why I'm getting invited to coffees and getting pastry. So I would love to hear, you know, a response. I mean, this idea that we talk about it is great, understand it is great, but good grief. I mean, this is, if there's an ordinance, it should be modeled after other cities, other states, that have banned these products. Juul itself is taking some of its products off the market. They've hooked kids with products that are flavored products, and I got to tell you, it's a hot potato. We brought it to your attention. And, you know, in that context, there's a lot that we can do as a Human Relations Commission just by trying to advocate for our youth, and that's why I think that issue has come up as a major focus. So I would love to hear feedback on that issue. I know we sent a letter. There's a variety of things that the council can do, but this is an acute issue, it's a public health issue, and no one has any answers, not the best scientists in the country has an answer as to why people are dying and why they have serious lung illness. If this were the Tylenol situation, every single product would be taken off the shelves. And I just want to advocate for our youth here and say, hey, let's, let's get on this right away, let's stop it. And, you know, maybe there were two different kinds of issues. First was the youth council saying something like, hey, a lot of people vape. But now, this is different. This is thousands of cases of serious lung illness, you know, people dying, kids dying, 17-year-olds. Just because they want to try out vaping, should we not protect them? I think we have to do that. So I just urge you on that issue, because it's a very acute issue, please do something. Please stop it. Take these products off the shelves. I think you have the power to do that, and I don't think it needs a lot of study. I think when you have 1,000 cases and this many deaths in the community, I really think it has to be done, and has to be done right away. So I just wanted to add that. Stephen, you had other comments, I think, on other issues.
I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Koo's second point real quickly. This past spring and this past summer, we heard feedback from residents around the community that Menlo Pool was just not an accessible place. You know, if you had a kid with special needs and you have an opposite-sex caregiver, there wasn't a family restroom that they could use to change or use the bathroom, and in many cases, they were being told to go to the pool in Menlo Park. We also heard from parents that they were struggling to find recreational programs that were accessible to two kids with special needs. And so we invited them to our retreat this past summer, and 15 and 20 of them came out. And this was an instance where we used our platform as a commission to really echo the voices of our community members, many of whom had been working on these issues for a couple of years now, and just were not getting the feedback that they were needing from the city. But luckily, because of that, you know, we're proud to say now that the Community Services Department has decided to make this one of their defining projects for the, for the year, and we're so happy to use our platform to do that. And I believe they have assembled a working group of 15 staff members who are all very passionate and eager to address these issues, ensuring that all members of our community feel welcome and included. And so hopefully, sometime in FY '20, they'll bring some requests to the council through the regular budget cycle, and hopefully, at that time, the commission can weigh back in and provide our input as to why, why these services are important, and why more of our community should be included, and why they should be able to access and use these programs and facilities.
Commissioner Riguer had her light on.
I was going to say, I think that that in itself played like how our city works. Councilmember Lydia was at our retreat, she brought it to the city council, we were there, we heard people saying what their needs were, and an important thing, and then we were working with the staff, and Parks and Rec Department's been wonderful, working very hard on this issue. And I think that's like what I would really like to see, us all working together, getting, working together, and the staff, the city council, and us, and the community, seeing a problem, or seeing something good too, and just going forward and taking it. So I just want to say thank you to all of us. I think that is one.
Vice Mayor Fine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all, thanks to all the members of the HRC. It's really nice to see you here, and thank you for your service. I really liked the chair's analogy of you all being catalysts and going out there in the community and kind of accelerating things so that the community can have a good discussion about them. I think that's how I've always kind of seen the HRC is. One, you do some mechanical things with His Rap and CDBG, but also kind of acting as a conscience for the council and our community, and bubbling up issues we may not be aware of, and vaping is clearly an example of that. Just looking over some of the goals, it looks like some of the goals are pretty diverse and expansive, and probably reflective of the diversity of the commission, and that's a good thing. I would just add, you know, as you look at that expanded scope within, you know, kind of new areas such as social isolation, or the census, or climate change, think about, you know, how you can use existing people or resources or organizations to leverage your efforts, and not get this kind of, you know, expansion of scope and poor quality. I'm just thinking of, for example, climate change, maybe it's Santa Clara Valley Water District. The county, a few of you have mentioned, you know, the county's working on vaping issues. They may be a good lead partner for us. On the census, Assemblymember Berman is doing a lot of work on that too, and may be a good resource. So there's a lot of great goals in here. Do lean on our staff to the extent it's appropriate, but there's a lot of nice goals here. I do hope we accomplish many of them, and it's, it's good to have an active commission that lets us know about some serious issues. Vaping clearly seems to be topical and top of mind, so we appreciate all your work.
So, so for this climate change, I think that is one of your priorities, so maybe we could all work together and try and figure that one out. But also, I've been working with Zero Waste Commission, I mean, Zero Waste, the City of Zero Waste, and I've also on the sustainability for the school district, and I'm also working with other organizations, really trying to figure out how. And we're trying to figure out how, because, because of this, the ban that's going to start happening in January with the, the plastic bags and this, we're trying to figure out how to make it more inclusive with the community, like trying to do something at farmers markets and stuff to.
I did want to add, you know, I think the Vice Mayor makes a very fine point. When you look at the municipal code, and it talks about our authority, it does mention that the commission should coordinate programs of the commission with similar programs by private and public agencies and organizations. And so I think historically and currently, we do our best to leverage existing resources so that we can do more with less. I think one of the questions that we are kind of embedded in the question on the screen is, to what extent beyond that do we fulfill our charge? The code also talks about how we should recommend local legislation or other action to the council relating to matters within the jurisdiction of the commission. So to the extent that we can get feedback from the commission, from the council about how we do that, how do we recommend local legislation or local action to this body, the council, in addition to us working in collaboration with other public and private agencies and organizations?
So I would just say on that, what we've seen from some commissions in the city is they have a colleagues memo that is then debated at their commission and recommended to the council, and the council eventually takes it up. An example of that is the potential opening of Foothill Park to non-residents, which kind of started in the Parks and Rec, they discussed it for a year or so, and it'll at some point become in the council for us to discuss. That's no, you know, surety that it's going to happen, but it's certainly a method that other commissions have used. PTC has done that too.
Yep. Yeah, so just want to echo the thanks to all of you for serving on this commission. You guys have done some great work this year. I did want to mention your vaping letter, I think we, Councilmember Koo covered it pretty well. I do have to say, our smoking ordinances are pretty strong, you know, and looking at like the ACS presentation, it wasn't clear how Palo Alto-specific it was, and I think, you know, there's very few places in the city that sell cigarettes and vaping products by our ordinances, so I think getting maybe some, some specific Palo Alto recommendations would be useful. If you're suggesting an outright ban, just be very clear about what you're suggesting. I also wanted to...
That was the...
But it wasn't in the letter. I would be very clear in the letter, like what you want us to do.
Well, there was a safety issue. Let's be just blunt about it. I mean, if a youth who's 17 picks up a vaping product and ends up in Stanford Hospital with serious lung illness or dies, I think that's...
I believe it's covered, like our smoking ordinance, I think you have to be 18 or over, so if somebody's not selling something illegally.
You know, I think when you, you look at a company that's acted the way Juul has acted and others have acted, to hook kids, and then, you know, talk about 18, this is not something any kid should be punished for, it's not their fault.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, it would be helpful to know what you're suggesting we do.
Well, I think we left it open also, so you guys can, can also think about it, because we don't have the power to pass an ordinance that stops this, but frankly, I don't want it to appear anywhere in the city. I think, you know, there should be no reason for it. If there's a product that's on your shelf, just think of it in terms of analogizing it to Tylenol, you know?
Cigarettes are similar, right?
Well, Tylenol had a problem, and people were dying because the product was spiked, so they put all kinds of wrappers on it. Here, I think, you know, just to be really blunt about it, kids pick up these products, and no one knows, you know, how to stop getting a serious lung illness or dying. Ask any of them, do they know? They don't. Now, ACS is local, and one of the things to bring to your attention about that study is that these were people who counseled youth in our community, and they came to us for His Rap money. And the head of ACS said to us in the His Rap meeting, I want more money, I want another $50,000 to work on this problem.
Okay. And he's a great guy, ACS is a great organization.
Yeah, and he said, I mean, that's, that's, that's a start, you know, it'd be great to get some money to interact with, with kids. They've got to know that people are taking advantage of them.
Okay, thanks. Actually, I have like four more points if I can get through real quick. So I didn't see, when I finish, I'd like to hear your comments, anything on veterans programs, you know, we do have our Veterans Day coming up, and I know you guys have done some things with vets before. A question about the Palo Alto mediation program, and how is it working with renters and landlords? Are you guys seeing more issues coming up? Are you hearing much about rent increases, you know, and is that driving up the caseload for the mediation program?
It isn't. It's largely a dormant group, and there's very few cases. One, there are two sort of operational difficulties with the program. One is that none of the mediators get paid, and many people shy away from going to mediation because they don't feel that these are true mediators, they're just volunteers in the community. They have tremendous training, so they're an underutilized resource. The second problem is that the program is not run by the mediators. The program is run by an outside group, and that group is charged with operating, you know, the communications with the public, advertising their presence, and that group itself has its own business. And many of the things that that group does are related to rent. And so there is a, a problem with siphoning off of cases, and those two things have kept the group's docket very, very low. I was in the mediation...
Do you think people are aware of the program?
Not really. I mean, the program is advertised, I think, in a couple of places. One is the Enjoy Program advertisement, there are very few advertisements, and that's one of the criticisms of the outside group, that they don't put enough effort into advertising the mediation. But they also have a business, and their business is in handling rent issues. So those two factors, I think, are pretty critical. I think in the mediation program, if you want to docket, there are things that you could do to really help them. One is to talk to city attorneys about cases in which the mediators might alleviate court issues, for example, the homeless and other things, things to do with citations where going to court really is meaningless, where judges have come and spoken to the mediation group, they've said, hey, we've got all these cases where we have homeless people violating ordinances, and the city attorney is bringing them into the court system, why doesn't the city attorney get together with the mediation program and let them mediate? So there's a couple of things that can be done to improve the docket. I think in order to get more cases on rent control, you have to separate out Project Sentinel from the mediation program and have it run itself, either have a staff member do it. I was a community mediator in the county of Santa Clara, and I ran the whole community mediation program for about six months. We had 60 to 100 cases, we operated our own phone bank, we set up about 10 to 15 in-person mediations a month. They're not getting that in the whole year.
So, yeah, it seems like you have a depth of experience personally. I think it'd be interesting again for you guys maybe to recommend something specific back to council.
Sure.
I'm also interested in some of the age...
I just had a question.
Yep.
Were you interested in how the mediation program is working, or were you interested in how the Human Relations is dealing with people, renters? And, and have we had any issues with...
I'm wondering if people are aware of the program in terms of the renting landlord mediation program?
So...
And given the housing situation, I just wondered if you guys have seen an increase? It sounds like the answer is no.
I've had a couple of issues, when people have come to me, and they were being evicted, and some of them were undocumented, and, and I went straight to Joseph Midian's office, and they really helped them get settled into their place back, so they didn't go through the mediation, but I think it's, I think there's still a great need even though they're not using it.
Yeah, so if it's not useful, it's like, how do we make it useful, surely? And then the last two points are, glad to see you guys are doing some things with their senior community, you know, love to see you do more of that. And then the last one is, we are starting to talk about safe parking programs, and I think it'd be interesting to get some input from you guys on both vehicle, cars and oversized vehicles.
So how could we do that? How could we do that with...
Same thing, I think, I think a lot... Same thing. I think, I think a letter to councils is a great way to get issues to us. If you guys have some discussions about safe parking programs, or maybe look at what Mountain View is doing. I think one of our challenges is going to be social, social agencies that can help run a program, and that may be an area that you guys can help as well.
So regarding the safe parking lots, I appreciate the councilmember mentioning that. You know, when I first joined the commission two years ago, we had a similar joint meeting. And at that time, a majority of the council had expressed interest in working on the RV situation. And I had asked the council at the time if, if it was high enough of a priority that it refer it firmly to the commission for work. And unfortunately, that was never, never done. And given prior efforts by the city staff to work on the issue, we were unable to get traction to reinitiate any work on our end on that issue. So if the council would like our assistance with it, I think there's interest from the commission. We just need direction to do so, so that we can actually engage with staff and provide a recommendation to the council. So I appreciate you bringing it back up after lingering for two years.
Because that was one of my, when I was, when I was being interviewed, before you appointed me, and I really would like to work, because it was one of my passions and one of the needs. So I don't know, you would just want us to write a letter, or can we work together?
We could certainly work together. But I think, you know, if you guys have some good discussions on the topic, and like I said, maybe, maybe invite some people that run the nearby programs.
I guess, because I'm new, so I don't really know how to get, working with you guys. Like, how do we do this?
It would have been really useful if the council had included the commission when it brought up the safe parking lot program. I mean, the commission exists to advise the council and to provide leverage. And so to the extent that, you know, these initiatives come up, it'd be great to get a, an actual referral from the council. And I think there was some discussion on it, but it never actually advanced. So that's one formal way for the council to get our input and to include us in, in these issues, which we care about. But again, we don't have the power to direct staff or even to look into a lot of these issues, even if we'd like to. So we really need council to be more assertive about including us.
You guys have your additional areas of interest and things you're looking ahead. I think generally, we handle this as a study session. You hear from individual councilmembers of topics that they're interested in, and then I think you guys kind of put topics on your agendas and discuss them, right?
Yeah.
Each, each of these items has its own sponsors within the commission. And one of the things that we wanted to do is separate out active, engaging, working projects from exploratory projects. So hearing this input, you know, I've taken some notes, but I can think of a couple places within our work plan where some of these ideas can fit in. Homelessness can also cover veterans' issues. Healthcare can cover veterans' issues. Mental health can cover veterans' issues. Same with, you know, these parking programs that you have. You know, those can also be included in, you know, trying to make sure those people have services in a variety of areas. So each of the work plan items that we put together over the summer will have a, what you might call a sponsor and a subsponsor. And those would be the people that would bring it up into the commission. So the way that we work is, we take these ideas, those people talk about it, they put the idea on the agenda. They could have a speaker. They could have their own presentations. But one of the things that we did is we lowered the, the bar, if you will, to actually talking about issues at the commission, so that even though something might not be ready to, to push up to council, we can sometimes get some very good ideas about it. We had a, a program last month about childcare and childcare at meetings. And, you know, some of the input that came back really directed people on those work plan items to go ahead and change some of the focus and conduct some additional work. So it's a, it's a process of stirring it up a little bit more and coming up with something clear that everybody can get on board with. So I think the input that you've given is super, and that's a great way to do it, is just simply to give that input. And I know you're a great liaison, because we've interacted a couple times. So we appreciate that.
I'd like to just make a comment. We try to pick topics or projects where we can add value. And we can do that one of two ways. Do a study, put some content together that's helpful, or we can bring groups together in the community. And I want to talk about that for a second with youth vaping. Through the Healthy Cities Committee, we have a subcommittee of people who are going to bring community stakeholders together and look at ways, besides ordinances, besides community education, what can, what can community stakeholders do to help with youth vaping, much the way Project Safety Net started with a group of engaged principals of nonprofits and service organizations in our community addressing an issue. And so with those two ways, relying on being a catalyst and relying on deeper study, we hope we can bring content to the council.
Thank you. I just want to make sure Commissioner Stinger, you had the opportunity to respond also to what councilmember DeBois said earlier. There was a moment, he asked you to wait. Did you get a chance to complete your thought? Okay, good. Just want to be sure that happened. Yeah, no, it's, pardon me, but I do think it would be the role of the council liaison to help you all with these, you know, some of these questions. So, you know, I, I hope that that's, you know, that sounds like that relationship is working well. So that's certainly on the commissions that I work with. That's the, you know, one of the main functions is to provide the translation from our four priorities and what's on the agenda, and to help figure out if there should be a colleagues memo, et cetera. So hopefully, that's all working as intended. In the interest of time, since I know we are running a bit late, I'll just mention with the accomplishments and all of the conversations and summits, I did have the opportunity to, to attend the gender equity one, which I certainly appreciated. Not this time, not now, but it certainly would be helpful to see what were three takeaways. What were some things that you learned? What were some things we could do differently? All well and good to have a community conversation, but from this, this report, it's not clear to me, you know, what the next steps were. In terms of the major focus areas, I do think it's appropriate to look at the Human Services Needs Assessment again. You all are a model of civility for all of us, and I just want to be sure that that process is, is run, you know, effectively, efficiently, and thoughtfully. So thank you for looking into that. Homelessness and housing has been touched on. Vaping has been touched on, you know, a great deal. Councilmember Koo and I did learn a ton there. I do, I do just want to clarify a few things. I think Chair Kralik said that he felt he had seen flavored tobacco for sale in gas stations here in Palo Alto?
I didn't say that.
Okay. I thought you said you'd seen them in gas stations.
No, I've seen Juul's display in gas stations.
Okay, but not here in Palo Alto?
I've seen it in several, several places in Palo Alto.
Okay. It shouldn't have been since January 1st. There are only seven places in Palo Alto that are currently allowed to sell flavored tobacco. It's based on the fact that they have 60% or more of their sales from tobacco and their restrictions on ages, et cetera. So, you know, I do encourage the commission to take a good, solid look at this. You should know, I am chatting with the city attorney and our staff who focuses on this to understand what we can do. Please don't think we're not looking at it. Councilmember Koo and I work on it on the City School Liaison Committee as well. I think that, you know, the ACS report that was included certainly touches on all the toolkit stuff that councilmember Koo and I saw with the professor at Stanford. And I, I want to absolutely commend Commissioner Stinger for her approach. When you read that, this is not going to be solved by us changing a law here, especially given what percentage of students are purchasing them online or getting them from a friend, et cetera. We're happy to be part of the solution, but the solution, you know, clearly is not going to be telling kids what to do. I have two of my own. I don't, it doesn't work all that well, usually. So I, I'm very grateful for your service. I feel as, this is my first year of council, looking across the boards and commissions, in some ways, you have the broadest remit. And I can sense, as I listen to you, there may be some struggle with where are the boundaries and what are the opportunities. But I appreciate the fact that when there are emerging issues, this is a place where people can come. So thank you.
Any other issues?
Yes, but we have six minutes left, and councilmember is not...
I'll keep it short. Yeah. If, if this council cannot take action to pull vaping products generally off the shelf in Palo Alto, who can? And kids use vaping products. They smoke THC pods. They use Juul primarily. And Juul is a bad actor in the corporate world. Many other companies that offer those products are. I talked to my son, who's a sixth, seventh grader, and he said, "I don't need vaping to fit in, Dad." But that's not everyone. And over the course of his school years, when they go and they go to the bathroom and everybody is vaping, that's a real problem. So I, I do think that this is the right place for it. And it is frustrating that someone would say, "Taking action in an ordinance is telling your children what to do." I'm sorry, but it's frustrating, because it's not necessarily. It's getting out front and telling the companies what not to do.
I just want to say that you're speaking on behalf of yourself, not the Human Relations Commission. I think that's, it's an important point at this point. This is a study session.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I just want to thank the HRC for coming here tonight. Looks like you guys are doing tremendous work. So thank you so much for you guys, for you guys' work on this. Really appreciate it. Continue, continue this great work. Some of the topics have already been discussed, and I know we're running short on time. But I want to echo all, all the concerns that you've guys heard about vaping. I, I hear from my kids that's in schools, openly in the bathrooms, you know, people report it, nothing happens. Makes me wonder what's going on. You know, I think there should be something, something that, something should be done. I'd love if the HRC actually continued more work in this, try to really figure out what makes sense for us in the city. I think the thing that makes me worry about is that we have ordinances like idling, right, which we, we don't really enforce, but we have laws on it. And I just want to make sure that we, whatever we do actually is effective, because I don't think it's, I don't think kids are allowed to vape in the bathroom, but they do it. You know, they do it on a very regular basis, according to what my kids tell me. So I think, I think part of it is not just having the right ordinances, because maybe, you know, it's not necessarily sold in, in gas stations and whatnot. But the kids are getting it, right? And they're getting it fairly readily. And they're smoking it fairly, or vaping it fairly openly as well. And I think to what councilmember Koo said earlier, kids report it and nothing happens. Like, the teachers just kind of accept it, and it, it doesn't make sense to me, right? It shouldn't, it shouldn't be like that. And it's not like it happens once in a blue moon, but it happens like every day, or something on that kind of frequency. So I, yeah, I definitely think that something needs to be done, and I'd love to get HRC's help on that. I think safe parking could be another one, perhaps. You know, I think as a council, we'll probably discuss that and see. But to me, it seems like we should try to leverage the, the wisdom and, and work that the commission's interested in and able to do. And just want to end here, just saying that, you know, anything that, that we could do on the council to help with your mission to, to be more effective, let us know, because I want to make sure that you guys are enabled for success. Thank you.
Councilmember Koo, do you want to speak again?
If you don't mind. So I just want to say to Chair Gabe Kralik, I hear your passion about this and your concern. So thank you very much for that. I just want to make one more mention that what I learned at Hooked Conference is that within these, these e-cigarettes, there's a matter in there called the benzoid acid, which should not be handled without gloves. So all of the researchers and doctors do not handle this item, this, this chemical with gloves, yet it's in the cigarettes, in these e-cigarettes. And if we're going to be talking about climate change and doing something about climate change, this benzoid acid does not break down easily in the environment. So there's a problem there also. And if it's nothing, it's both environmentally concerned, as well as the health and safety of the children. So I want to thank you for that. Regarding safe parking update, I just want to provide an update. This month's Policy and Services Committee meeting has been canceled. So we will have a meeting on November the 12th, and I believe there is a safe parking agenda item on it. In terms of, so I'm not speaking for the council, but I would think that in a direction to the committee on how to come to us on areas of interest, I think it would be most prudent for you guys to introduce it amongst yourselves for a discussion, and then, based on your vote, whether you're going to send a letter to council. I don't think a colleagues memo is the way to do it. I think a letter, as like PTC does, ARB does, with their, with their manner of how they communicate with council, that would be how I would think would be the best. And I would be remiss not to thank Minka, who's staffed to the Human Relations Commission. She's been, in all of my observations, you've been right there to support them coming up with suggestions, really great suggestions in support of this commission, as well as to Kristin. Thank you both.
Let me add my thanks as well. Thank you guys very much for coming and doing this with us. I think this was useful and interesting. Thank you very much to staff, Minka, right? Very much appreciate it. I know it's, it's exciting times sometimes, and I think, thank you for doing what you've done. You want to, any, any final, final thoughts we had? We've got about 30 seconds.
I want to thank the senior members of our team. Daryl Savage, who's not here, and also Valerie Stinger, put this program together as a subcommittee and met with the mayor and the vice mayor, and do appreciate that interaction and that hard work that went into that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. So we are at 7:31, and coming up to our 7 o'clock item, which is city manager comment. So why don't we go to that? We'll give everybody like 30 seconds here, and then let's do that.
Let's see. So we will now turn to Assistant City Manager, Michelle Flaherty, for city manager comments. You have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Michelle Poche Flaherty, deputy city manager, filling in for Ed Chikada, who couldn't be here tonight. We have just a few announcements we'd like to share. The first is with respect to Caltrain electrification, which is moving forward. The last portion of potholing and tree work, which began back in March of 2019, has been completed in preparation for installing poles and the overhead electrical power lines. The concrete foundations for the poles will be installed first, and this work will start in Palo Alto and Mountain View in November. The foundations will be installed at night by equipment mounted on railcars and will be done in one pass from south to north through Palo Alto. If you'd like to learn more about that, please go online to calmod.org/construction. That's C-A-L-M-O-D dot org slash construction. Next, work is nearly complete on phases one and two of the Charleston-Rastroero Corridor project. Construction will start on the Los Altos Hetch Hetchy bicycle path next month. The path is being widened, and as a result of that, vegetation and tree limbs that encroach within a certain distance of the San Francisco PUC pipelines are going to have to be removed. So out of 142 trees, we've reduced it down to 10 trees that will have to be removed. 16 other trees will be significantly pruned, some with more than 25% of their canopies. But per the city's tree removal policy, 14-day notices will be posted with tree pruning and removal starting in early November, and bike path repaving will follow after that. To learn more about the project, please go to cityofpaloalto.org/CACorridor. The Palo Alto City Library won an Innovation Award last week. We were very proud when the Urban Libraries Council last Thursday recognized the Palo Alto City Library as one of the top innovators of 2019 for its out-of-the-box thinking and creative use of robots as library resources. The library took the lead in ex... The library took the lead in exploring robotics technologies, developed a regular coding workshop, and hosted a regular Sunday Robot Show program to expose kids, teens, and adults to robotics. Couple of items upcoming this week that folks may want to know about. Tomorrow, here in the council chambers, on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 6:00 p.m., the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors will be holding a public meeting on the Stanford General Use Permit. So, again, the Board of Supervisors is coming here to Palo Alto, 6 o'clock tomorrow, and will be holding that public hearing here in the board chambers at City Hall. For more information, folks can find the meeting agenda for that at www.sccgov.org. And then on Wednesday, October 23rd, 3:30 to 5:30, will be the monthly Project Safety Net Community Meeting. We were just talking about Project Safety Net a few minutes ago with the Human Relations Commission. That meeting will be held on Wednesday at Coverly Community Center in Room H1 each October. This meeting showcases evaluation and shared measurement to evaluate youth wellness and suicide prevention efforts and help inform change. So, again, that will be at Coverly, Room H1, at 3:30 on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We now go to Oral Communications, where people may speak, members of the public may speak to any item that is not on the agenda tonight. And we have five speakers. And you will each have, given the hour, two minutes, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. I know how hard you work, and I appreciate it a great deal. I came here tonight to support an effort, a citizens-led effort, for a thorough council-led investigation of the actions of the Planning Commissioner, Michael Alcheck. If you haven't done so already, I encourage you to read the details of the Ballin Report, which you have already received, I believe, and which I hope you have become aware of significant ethical issues that are clearly, might be, possibly, a violation of the city's ethical standards. In today's political environment, where our federal government has failed us, I think it is critical that the citizens-led local government set a particularly strong standard that should be an example for the whole nation. Please take action soon. Thoroughly investigate the conduct of Commissioner Alcheck, and be totally transparent about it. If you don't want to do it yourself, I recommend an independent investigation, maybe led by a legal team, I do not know. But closed-door meetings, which are clearly part of the investigation, are not the way to run our government. So, I would encourage you very much to take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch.
Councilmembers, Fred Ballin has recently submitted to you and later commented on a comprehensive investigation undertaken by him detailing the failure of PTC Commissioner Michael Alcheck to recuse himself on multiple occasions because of glaring conflicts of interest regarding municipal code provisions that affected two residential properties in Palo Alto, which he had a significant ownership interest in, and they came before him while he was on the commission. I have read that report. As a former planning commissioner and chair of the commission, it saddens me to say that I am appalled at the personal influence that Mr. Alcheck had and was permitted by city staff to have on these matters that affected him and his sister personally. Government Code Section 81700 says, and I quote, "No public official at any level of state or local government shall make participant in making or in any way attempt to use his official position to influence a governmental decision in which he knows or has reason to know he has a financial interest." Section 87220, and I quote in part, "This article is applicable to members of planning commissions." The facts set forth in Mr. Ballin's report of his investigation should be promptly verified by one or more independent persons appointed by council. But assuming those facts are true, as they appear to be, it's hard to believe that there can be any outcome other than Mr. Alcheck being asked to or being required to resign his seat on the commission for his egregious ethical failures. I urge you to take whatever steps are needed to promptly achieve that result. Failure to do so would erode the confidence residents must have about the ethical conduct that city staff, including the city manager, the city attorney, and the city planning official, councilmembers, city-appointed officials must adhere to. You should not simply disregard what Mr. Alcheck has done, the facts of which are detailed in Mr. Ballin's comprehensive report.
Thank you.
Prompt action by you is urgently required.
Suzanne Keen.
Well, I agree with everything that just has been said. If we need an independent more investigation, let it be soon. But it seems to me there's already enough evidence that there has been many ethical violations, and that the next step is for you all, the Palo Alto City Council, to be responsible and to remove this man from a public position where he can make any decisions for anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Schmidt.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to say a word about the importance of a planning commission. They deal with issues of concern that affect with big consequences for every Palo Alton. And they do, in general, a good job. For us, they look at details that concern us all. They express different opinions in public about directions and ways to operate. They do in-depth work, looking at hundreds of pages of material that they can share with us. And finally, there are representatives to council, to the public, on issues of concern to all of us. I think Fred Ballin has brought up some issues that are very concerning. And I note, there are concerns in the community about this. It's important that the council, as a representative body of all of us, take a serious look at this set of issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeb Eddy.
I'm Jeb Eddy, 48-year resident of Palo Alto here, very concerned about the Stanford GUP. Thank you for your continuing support of Palo Alto and a regional solution towards the problems that we are all facing. I have a quick set of slides. Let's see, which one is that? How about that? Ah, yes. So, a graduate student and I have been using a three-dimensional, 3D development tool for trying to put into pictures the huge volume of stuff in the printed GUP. So, it starts with the core campus, then we add the six, these are all layers. We add the six-mile radius that has to do with the potential housing influence. Of course, there's more than that. The Stanford campus is right in the middle of that. Here's the aerial shot showing, again, the campus core and the construction of what has to be called Escondido Towers, not Escondido Village. Here's the kind of things we can do. We can cover up, we can add color to the individual development districts that the university has provided with us, and we can put different kinds of volumes of potential construction on different locations of these. Here's the way an awful lot of the stuff in the GUP works. Here's our particular interested in traffic. At every large intersection, we can put a tower that shows the volume of traffic at time of day. So, in one picture, we can get a lot more information than we can out of the dozens and dozens of pages of single-spaced stuff. And we can go, let's see. On this particular version, you have to go back and forth to see the, some of the differences. This one, I'm sorry to say, is very light, but it takes an even further out picture. It shows 280 at Page Mill Road, Sand Hill Road, and way over in the far corner, far, far in the center, is Facebook. These are the big intersections that are going to affect your employees, the workforce here in the area, and I think the GUP can do a better job of trying to address these. Here's cut-through traffic in East Palo Alto. Is that the end?
That's, can you wrap it up pretty quick here?
Sure.
Got like one or, cool.
My opinion, we need regional approaches, and no on the development agreement. That's my personal opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is approval, thank you to the public. Next item is approval of minutes for the September 23rd and October 7th meetings, and I will move approval of those.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Let's see. Councilmember Tanaka, did you wish to speak to this item?
No on four.
We're on minutes. Would you vote on the minutes, please? And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Niss absent. We now move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Tanaka, you wish to register a no vote on item four?
Yep.
Councilmember Cormac.
I wish to register a no vote on item five.
Councilmember Koo.
No on four and five.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on...
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second. Moved by the vice mayor, seconded by me. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Niss absent. Councilmember Tanaka, would you care to speak to your no vote on item four?
Sure. So, in general, it seems like a good thing to replace the clarifier, so I don't dispute that. But the big challenge I have here is, this is a $2.2 million contract. And right now, even though this is for five cities, Palo Alto is paying 36%. If we were to evenly split across the cities, it would be, it should be more like 20%. That 16% difference represents about $350,000 extra that Palo Alto is paying. This is a regional water quality control plant, not a Palo Alto water quality control plant. And it doesn't seem right that we are paying more than our fair share. Thanks.
Councilmember Cormac, care to speak to your no vote on item five?
Yes. This is, this is not about the importance of the North Ventura Project. This is just a continuation of my belief that we shouldn't be spending money that we don't have when it doesn't look like this project will currently be able to achieve all the things that we hoped, and the number-one thing was housing. Fundamentally, we're reducing our budget stabilization reserve by 79%. That seems significant to me. We're only in month four of our fiscal year.
Councilmember Koo.
So, on item four, reading the questions that were sent to staff. Councilmember Tanaka's question about the, so, I'm also not understanding how is it that Palo Alto is paying 36% versus the other five agencies' share, which is 64%? It doesn't seem appropriate, so I guess I don't have that answer. It's not answered sufficiently. Number five, for consent item number five, I think what I have an issue, well, I know, what I have an issue is bullet point number two, which is amplify the analysis to include three project alternatives. I don't think council ever decided on how many or instructed the working group or staff as to how many is the number. I think it's more appropriate for it to be brought back to council with simple project alternatives and for council to eliminate as it goes, with one of them being do-nothing, starting with one of them, one of the project alternatives as do-nothing. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. We now move on. What time is it? It is quarter to eight. What's that? We made up some time, and we did. Let's see, what time is it? Yeah, let's just keep going. So, now, we move to the first action item, which is the RPP for all Palo Alto. And is there a staff presentation? So, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Philip Cami, Chief Transportation Official. And joining me tonight is Mark Herr, our Parking Operations Lead. I'm going to try and go through the presentation really quickly, because Mark needs to leave just a little bit after eight, and I wanted to maybe be able to answer some questions. So, tonight's staff is here to seek the adoption of a resolution of a residential preferential parking program pilot, it's a lot of Ps, and the amendments to contracts that are necessary to carry out this pilot, and also a budget amendment for the pilot. This is the RPP citywide ordinance that the residents submitted a petition seeking the formation of the RPP district following this program criteria. And this is the timeline that leads us up to today. In August of 2018, the residents submitted a petition asking for the formation of this district. PTC prioritized this along with three others, but this was the number-one priority for, their highest priority for formation of districts. In April, staff initiated data collection, collecting parking supply and occupancy. And in May, city council directed staff to initiate program development. In June through July, staff worked with the community to develop the program designs and to collect resident feedback. In August, there was the survey of the residents and more data collection, along with a PTC meeting. And here we are in October, with the city council review, and this is a public hearing. And the anticipated program start is in November, with a goal of a 12-month pilot that would carry us through October 31 of 2020. So, the stakeholder engagement, as I mentioned on a slide previously, began in August of 2018. That was the regular communication with residents that defined the process and possible solutions and alternatives to the parking intrusion that was identified. And in July 31st of 2019, there was a community workshop that occurred at Jerry Bowden Park. And August 6th, 2019, just before I started here, there was a survey mailer that went to households. This highlights some of the data collection that was conducted by city staff. And when I say city staff, I'm talking about Mark, our parking staff currently. So, on April 16th, he collected data. April 17th, April 18th. It's worth noting that on April 22nd, Parking Lot C7, it's a surface parking lot in the California Avenue District, closed. So, data was collected before, and then one day after that, it was collected. And then, again, we collected data per a PTC request to make sure that, you know, we weren't seeing significant changes. Actually, the day following our PTC meeting on August 29th, Mark went out there and collected data at four different points, just to confirm. And really, we found kind of minimal change before and after the parking, that surface lot had closed. That's mostly likely due to mitigation that was done, you know, we've, as you saw an item earlier tonight for Valley contract, we've got Valley out there helping customers to find parking. So, this slide shows the area that was, the residents that we're met with. The blue area is the program opt-in eligibility area, as recommended. This area, residents can opt into the program at a later date if they so wish. And that's, the blue area represents 240 spaces approximately. And the red area is the program district. That's where there was the highest residential interest, and that's where we're recommending a pilot program be used. And it's, that represents 253 approximately, 253 spaces. So, in total, that's 493 spaces in the eligible area. So in total, that's 493 spaces in the eligible area. This slide shows our peak hour average occupancy, and I really want to thank Michelle for telling me to make this bigger because I can actually read it on the board there. Yeah, that's much better. But the red blocks, obviously closest to the California Avenue underpass, you can see the highest parking occupancies, and some of them are, you know, 93%, 100%, 90%, and that's the peak hour average occupancy in this area. This just highlights the survey that was sent to the households. And the response rate, so we received 59% of the households responded, and within that, the response rate was 89%, which is above the threshold required to enact a RPP district. 70% is required, 70% plus one. And this is the program details for the proposed pilot. And I just want to mention that some of the PTC recommendations, we'll actually come back to PTC in a more broad conversation. They also, as I mentioned earlier, asked us to look at impacts from the California Avenue Garage and to provide some more, some more data in this presentation, as well as to look at, you know, why we had recommended five hang tags for this program. It's discussed a bit in the report, but it's worth noting that the average in all of our other districts is 2.5 permits, although we're allowing five permits in just about all of them, five or more, I should say, in just about all of them. The average is 2.5. So although we're allowing five, that doesn't mean everybody's purchasing five, but we do want to have some kind of consistency in this period while we're administratively working to do wholesale or holistic changes to the RPP program. And with that, some next steps. So today, we're here at the City Council meeting, obviously, October 21. Permit sales and sign installation, should this be approved tonight, would begin in early November, the first week of November. And we tentatively would schedule pilot and enforcement to begin November 18. It could be a little bit sooner, it could be a little bit later. We could do soft enforcement potentially earlier. Really depends on how quickly we can get the signs out, make sure there's no rainy days or anything when we're trying to install, and also when residents can get their permits. And the pilot program would be scheduled to end on October 31, 2020. But that said, that's really not the end of it. We would come back before then to talk about evaluation criteria, how we would judge whether this program was successful, whether the residents want to continue with the program, et cetera. And so with that, we're happy to hear your comments or questions.
Thank you very much. So here's what I think we ought to do, given that we're about to lose Mark in the next 10 or 15 minutes, which is I'm going to suggest that we come back to council for a round of questions specifically, so not comments and stuff like that, but while we got Mark here. Then after that, let's go to the public, and then let's bring it back to council for questions, comments, and motions. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Questions from council. Councilmember Cormac.
Let me be the first to thank you for doing a thankless task. The questions I have are just specifically about the, if I look at the red and white, so helpful, thank you, our packet's in black and white, I'm like, okay. So on North California Avenue, I see on the south side, there isn't the red line. Is that because there's a bike lane? Is that because those are churches? We've got two blocks that don't have that there.
Hello, yes, that is correct. The south side of North California Avenue is a dedicated bike lane, so there's no parking on those block faces.
Okay, great. And then I noticed that that one block on Washington Avenue that's between Emerson and Ramona is not in red, and that makes sense because they had a, I see they had a slightly lower, can you just help walk me through that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat which?
So there's one block on Washington that's not in the RPP. I just want to understand, between Emerson and Ramona, if you know, if you were sort of meetinging things up, you'd have that block in, in red, so. South side of Washington between Emerson and Ramona.
Based on resident feedback, we did not include that block face in the RPP district, but they again are eligible to opt in once the program is launched.
Okay, great. And then we did receive a question about High Street and why that wasn't included, the part where there is the sort of parallel parking. There was a question about that, if you could just share with us how that worked.
Are you referring to in front of the park?
Yes.
I believe, so some of that parking is reserved or intended to be reserved for patrons of the park. We do have some hourly parking there that's, I believe, I don't know how many spaces.
20 spaces, including three handicap spaces, I believe.
Okay.
So, yeah, so kind of some history of that is we've had some issues with events happening at parks and people having issues with attending those events based on RPP parking surrounding parks.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember DeBois.
So if I understand, if we pass this tonight, you would install signs in two weeks and start within a month?
Yeah, so unfortunately, we had hoped to be here a lot sooner. I believe targeted the September 21 meeting to bring this before you, but due to some of the questions and comments that we received from PTC, we had to do some additional work before we came before you tonight. So we have been moving in the background to prepare to install, so everything is ready to go, at which point it is approved, should you approve it tonight.
That's pretty awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Koo?
In the other RPPs, weren't there at least two permits for the residents that were free? Or were they all $50? Because I thought there was a couple, I'm sorry.
So this, this actually is a great question about consistency. We have three other districts where there is a first decal free, if that's what you're referring to. That was something that, you know, and this, this all comes back to, we're going to want to look at consistency, and, I mean, this one's actually probably the easiest one to make consistent with everything, but right now, we don't have a consistent. This is close to consistent. I understand that the residents had some concern about the decal with this program design. That said, I'm not sure that every resident wants five hang tags either. So I think, you know, in the end, we're really going to want to look at how we can consistently apply rules across the RPP, and that's a conversation that we want to take back to PTC and then, and then back here to council.
Okay. So during the pilot program period, is there any way for it to come back for consideration in terms of the free hang tags or decals? I guess, you know, I know that area, and some of the homes don't have parking, I mean, garage or even a driveway. They're smaller lots, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not causing financial issues for them.
If, if council desires us to modify the program, this was the, you know, just to understand, this was the program that the residents voted on, but if council desires to change it, you could change it tonight if, if you so desire, but I would caution against changing it too much during the pilot. I'd rather come back and say, this is how the pilot went.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is essentially identical to the college terrace plan, is that right?
Yeah, so very, very similar to the college terrace, although I think they have five, two maximum?
Two.
Yeah. And they also do pay, yeah, college terrace pays, Crescent Park pays, and Old Palo Alto would pay, you know, in essence. I'd also want to emphasize that this is not a revenue neutral or revenue earning program. In general, the RPP program is costing the city of Palo Alto around three quarters of a million dollars per year, so.
That, that's, that's the offside of not providing enough parking in buildings and so forth. Yeah, I understand. What, so you mentioned something about what impacts from, there was impacts that they wanted you to study from the California Avenue Garage. What are those impacts? What garage?
So what I was referencing is PTC had requested that we look at whether there were impacts from that surface lot that closed that I mentioned, which is surface lot C7.
Oh, lot C, okay.
And, and there's construction of the new California Avenue Garage. I, I think that it's really relevant that once that garage is constructed, that there might be changes in this district as well, but that's something we're going to also need to evaluate as it happens.
I see, I see. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, some quick questions. So one, you mentioned that this program as written up today is what the residents voted on and roughly endorsed, block by block?
Yes, this is, this is the exact program that they ratified, I should say.
Okay. And then what do you, I guess this is a two-part question. One, what, what are you and your role and your team hoping to learn over the next year in this pilot? And then as we progress with some kind of the more holistic changes to the RPP districts, what do you think may change in this RPP if we pass it?
Yeah, I think, I hate to say that it's too soon to say for either of those, but I think that's really what we want to talk about more broadly, as we look at, you know, ways of dealing with RPP. Do we want to look at availability standards? Do we want to look at other possibilities other than RPP, other options that might be appropriate for handling the parking intrusion? So it's, it's a little bit difficult to say right now. I think that that's going to be a pretty expansive discussion.
Yeah, no, understood. I mean, just looking at this RPP and having seen a number of them, this is different in a number of aspects, which.
Yeah, and so what I would say is our current evaluation criteria for RPP pilots has been, are the residents in the area and the employees, you know, when they, when they come to speak, are they, are they happy with the program as it's been, you know, do they want minor modifications? But that's really what it's been, is what kind of minor modifications can we do to improve this program, not, you know, is this, is this meeting, you know, this metric and, and this measure? Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Seeing no further lights from council. Mark, thank you very much for all this work, and thanks for joining us tonight, and we'll go to the public. And how many speakers do we have? Five. Well, let's do two minutes, and the first speaker will be Paul Machado.
Good evening, Mayor and council. When I walked the streets of my neighborhood, Evergreen Park, securing signatures for a proposed RPP, I was startled when, after telling the woman who answered the door my purpose for the visit, and she responded loudly, "Where have you been?" She then related how her husband was ill. He received treatment several times a week, and it left him completely exhausted. She would then drive him home, double park as there was no parking available near her house, help her husband inside their home, and then park her car. I was born and raised in this town. I found it to be a unique, tight-knit community of neighborhoods that supported each other. Families first could have been a city motto. I hope and believe neighborhoods and families are still the backbone of this city. Because of this, I totally support the RPP motion before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Ballen.
Can you move the slide to number 10? I'll get there in a minute. So I'm speaking here in support of the one-year pilot of the RPP in Old Palo Alto, specified in the staff report. The residents have properly engaged in the process, demonstrated a high participation rate, and overwhelming approval from those who responded. It should proceed as scheduled. However, you'll notice up here in the second section, it talks about, is this number 10 with the hang tags? You'll have my glasses. Yeah, the hang tags. That's new, okay? In college terraces and every other district that has a parking program, you've got a decal on your card, on your car, on your bumper or in your back window, and it has your license plate number or a barcode, so that car is identified. We're now going to a process where you can buy five hang tags. They don't go on the car, they hang in front. They can be swapped around, there's a real possibility of abuse there. So I really think that needs to be looked at. I don't know if this has been put into place for expedience to make this program go faster at this point, but I really think you want to look at it, that what we have in college terrace is you've got a sticker on the back of your car or in the window. You also can buy two guest permits. And you know who the car is, and it's not being passed around from place to place, so keep that in mind as the program moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Terry Holtermann.
Thank you. I'll make my comments short. I really believe in the Old Palo Alto RPP. This is a necessary tool for this neighborhood. We must do more to help our neighborhoods. I'm a real strong believer in that, and I think this is a first step to try to mitigate some of the issues that they've had to deal with for several years now. I live on the other side of them. I live in the Mayfield area, and I know what it's like when you come home at night and you're dead tired, and you can't find a place to park anywhere on the street, and so the frustration that that leads to. So I encourage you highly to approve this RPP tonight and move forward and support neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Proter.
Thank you for hearing all of our comments. I'm also in support of the RPP in Old Palo Alto. I live on that block that had 100% occupancy. I have cars there from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 or 9:00 at night, every day. I would not appreciate having to pay to park in front of my own house. I don't think it's fair that we should be expected to pay when there's a parking lot for Caltrans that sits partially open every day. I was there today, there were at least 30 spots. They charge $5 a day, which I think is ludicrous, but I'm now being asked to pay to park in front of my own house so that a parking lot can sit empty. I appreciate your thinking about that, and I hope you will address it tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Robel.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I, I'm not going to repeat because I think everybody has heard the arguments for this and hopefully supports it. What I did want to, so I'm just, you know, it's overwhelming support for this, and I did want to just ask the people in the audience, because there's a lot of people here, and I asked everyone not to speak because it would just chew up the full 90 minutes that this was scheduled for, but kind of a show of hands of people who support the RPP. So I think it's pretty much, there's not many people that don't have their hands up, so I just want that to be on record. And, you know, I do believe that delaying the RPP today would be kind of punitive, given all the information that's been presented to you in terms of approval rate, participation rate, following all the steps that are in the municipal code, et cetera. So hopefully that's, that won't be an issue. And I do want to thank also Philip and his team, who, it's been great, we're glad you're on board and working with you, and I think some of these points that were raised at PTC are really about policy issues as well as a degree of analytical rigor that wasn't applied to other RPPs. It's always good to do more analysis, and I think all of that, those policy issues and analysis can be done in conjunction with MRG and the broader, you know, there's other RPP process improvements being done, and I think in the context of that, that's where that would be appropriate. Treat us like all the other neighborhoods, the five or six, and that's great. So again, I want to thank Philip and the city staff and also the residents, and not only from our neighborhood, but the other neighborhoods that came out. I've been in touch with a lot of the different neighborhood groups, and I really appreciate their support as well. So thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, that concludes. Yeah, do you need, do you want, do you want to speak to this at all? We have the chair of the PTC here. Do you want to speak to this at all, or are you good? Okay. Thank you. We may, in case we call you up, right? Okay. Okay, so now we return to council, and I think in the sort of interest of moving this along, if nobody's terribly object, I'm just going to move the staff motion, seconded by Vice Mayor Fine. I'll speak very briefly to it. I think, you know, we have a policy here, these folks have followed it. It sort of takes a while, but we're at that point now. I don't think it makes sense to delay any further. That said, you know, we do have, I count three different sort of formats of these available in town right now. We have this one and the college terrace one, which are very similar. We have the downtown one, and South Gate one, and Evergreen one, where the first permit's free, but then there's also employee permits sold in that region. And in the one I live in, the first one's a decal, but then you can get hang tags after that. And, and then there's also the Crescent Park one, which is sort of a little bit of a different beast as well. So I'm glad staff is looking at the 27 recommendations, and I think it's, it's, you know, this is, this is a good year for us to normalize these things and have a standard, a standard template for the whole city, right? But I don't think we should wait up on, I don't think we should wait to implement this. Delighted that if we pass this tonight, the signs will go up in a couple of weeks, and then, and so it's all good. Vice Mayor Fine, care to speak to your second?
I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agreed with everything you said.
Agreed with everything you said. Just a couple of quick things. Yes, on the hang tags, just to the public, one reason we've heard about hang tags is they are more convenient. So, yes, there could be a downside risk of people moving them among vehicles, but if it's one of you or your neighbors, you may want that flexibility. One thing I did notice on this RPP that's interesting to me is really the range of occupancy. So, if you look at peak hour average occupancy, you know, one block faces 20%, another is 100%, and they are a block and a half away from each other. That's pretty kooky. And that's obviously a hard problem to solve, and you can't just solve for the 100% block, because then people go and park a block away and block in your neighbors, and that's annoying. So, there's kind of this whack-a-mole problem, which is why we have these districts, and we allow people to opt into them over time, and they're slowly expanding. But I do want us to be aware that we are effectively privatizing a public resource. It does cost the city three-quarters of a million dollars a year. That's a choice we've made, it's an ongoing city commitment and program, but there is a cost to all of us. And, you know, now when those of us, if we go to Old Palo Alto for a reason, you know, we will have to abide by the rules if we don't live there. That has impacts too, if you have friends or family or whatever, and you're visiting. So, just keeping that in mind. Anyways, I could make go on about how I'd love to see us integrate all our different parking programs, but I know you're working on it. It's nice to see this go forward. I know the neighbors have worked hard on it, and I think we should just pass this as is tonight. Is there a second reading of this one? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Koo to be followed by Councilmembers DuBois and Cormac.
I agree that we should just go ahead with this, but I would like to suggest, or if I may, like, make a friendly amendment. Friendly amendment is to have two permits to the residents for free.
I'm not gonna accept that as a friendly amendment, so if you can find a second for it.
Do I have a second? Going once.
Seeing no second.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to get some clarity about the questions about parking on High Street. Are you saying that all the spots near the park, are those time-limited spots, or are those all-day spots?
So, they're not all time-limited, but there are 20 of them that are time-limited. I'm sorry, I don't know how many total spots are there, but there's 20 of the, he's referring to the ones in front of the park.
So, it doesn't show up as red because of the 20 open spots?
Yeah, well, or not necessarily open spots, but those weren't surveyed in this, or they weren't recorded in this. I don't want to say they weren't surveyed, but they weren't included in the program at current. They could be potentially.
So, there's still some number of spots that would be free all-day parking for Caltrains?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, I do think, you know, parkers seek out loopholes. This is free Caltrain parking. I've heard it's free airport parking, that people will park here, get on the train, and go up to San Mateo to get the SFO.
And make noise as they go overhead, too.
Yeah. I mean, the neighborhood followed the ordinance. It's taken a year and a half. I think it started more than two years ago in terms of discussing this. So, I just want to say thank you for your patience to people that live there. This is an all-residential neighborhood, no businesses, and, you know, we see parking rates over 90% on some streets. So, you know, we shouldn't allow this level of parking in the neighborhood. I think the ability to hit 70% voting is a very high threshold as well, so that, to me, that indicates that there's widespread agreement in the neighborhood that this is a problem. You know, I do, you know, Lydia's motion to have a free permit, I do think charging for a permit is okay. People do have their driveways. I am curious about the hang tag, because I do see houses in Palo Alto that are being used by businesses, 10 or 15 people working out of a house. And so, maybe it's not tonight, but maybe it's when you come back with kind of the broader city program. I do think we should be using technology to tie vehicles to addresses, whatever means that's done through. So, I support the motion. I really appreciate staff being prepared. I think it's very impressive that this is gonna roll out within a few weeks. So, thank you for that.
Councilmember Cormac.
I have very little to add, but I certainly appreciate the opportunity that the residents afforded me to come and visit in their neighborhood. I allotted 10 extra minutes in case it took me a while to find parking. I was lucky, so that was, that was excellent. And I do just want to also compliment staff who's had to navigate this. Everyone's been super patient, everyone, so that's great. And I, and I very much look forward to these getting rationalized, and I agree with Mayor Phil Seth that this is the year.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I just also want to thank staff and also all the residents that came out and all the work that you guys did in a year and a half. Seems to make sense. I just have a few quick questions for staff. So, I guess, what was the rationale? I mean, I heard the vice mayor's explanation, but what was staff's rationale for going all hang tags versus just copying the College Terrace program exactly?
So, you have to forgive me, I'm gonna try and do my best to pretend that I was at this meetings, but I understand that there was some pushback from the residents as to getting the decals, not wanting to tie it to one vehicle, maybe they had multiple vehicle, or they didn't know whether their daughter was gonna need to park in front of their house, or their car, or what it was, the arrangement. I'm not exactly sure.
But how's that different from, let's say, College Terrace?
So, and just to be, you know, really clear, like, the neighboring RPP district, Evergreen Park, Mayfield, that's also five permits max. So, this was designed to be somewhat similar.
Oh, no, not to speeding that number, I'm just saying, why?
Why the hang tags versus the sticker? I understand that to be just the discussion that happened with the residents. I'm sorry to say I was not started with the city yet, so I can't, unfortunately, Mark would have been better to address that issue. Perhaps the residents might be able to answer that question? Maybe, maybe we could call Chris back up, and he could, he could answer.
Well, I guess, it's more just, you know, one reason why it costs us lots is because it's a lot to minister, right? And so, when we have like a different program for every single neighborhood without a really, really good reason, it makes it hard to administrate, right? And I'm actually in agreement that we should try to use technology or something to make this a little bit easier, so we don't have to use, we don't have to do it that way. But it just seems, unless there's a really good rationale, I mean, I don't, it doesn't seem like there's a tremendous difference between these kind of neighborhoods, but...
Yeah, I actually, I have to say I concur completely. I would love to have all these have exactly the same rules, or at least a range of rules that made sense for each area that, you know, could be applied. You know, this is a residential area with businesses, or this is a residential area without businesses, or this is downtown, but just a simple set of rules for, you know, how they would be applied.
Yeah.
That's what I want to see coming out of this process.
So, of the three-quarter million dollars, how much of it is, like, how would you break out the cost in the program? Because I know some of it goes to enforcement, which is offset a little bit by Fine's. So, like, I know a lot, a big chunk of it, like, for administration, I'm just curious to know how much.
I'm sorry to say, I don't have that here tonight. I can get back to you on that. But it's enforcement, it's the permit, it's the printing of the decals, and there's also the implementation, in particular for this, you know, one, we have to manufacture signs, but there's the ongoing administrative cost of it. Yeah, so I don't have the breakdown for that.
Okay, but I think that's something to look at, and, because I, I think it's important that we, that these kind of programs happen, but it's also, we have to think about the cost, and, you know, by having, you know, a custom program for every single neighborhood without a really good rationale, I think, makes it.
Yeah, if I can, I think the, the different types of permit assignments by district is not the cost, that's the administrative burden for, to staff specifically. It just makes it more difficult for us to manage it. It's really not a cost associated to the different permits assigned. Except for the free, obviously, there's, you know, if we're giving away a permit for free, there's a loss, or a potential loss, or if we're not, you know? But that's the only real administrative cost to that.
Okay. So, besides the hang tags, what else is different between this and College Terrace?
Well, that's a good question. I would really need to sit and look at the different programs, but in reality, all of the different programs have a little nuances that we'd want to, you know, go through in this, in this process of cleaning everything up. I mean, really, each program has a little nuance. Now, this program was modeled after Evergreen Park, which is its neighbor, and, you know, potentially, we might want to come back at the end of this pilot and say, does this make sense as part of Evergreen Park? And so, that's the reason why it's most closely modeled after that. Also, it's, you know, the ones that were, you know, most closely followed after, South Gate and Evergreen Park, Mayfield. So, those are the programs that are, it most closely resembles, not College Terrace or Crescent Park.
Well, College Terrace was the first, and I was president of the Neighborhood Association, and we did it, so I'm very, very familiar with that one.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, I guess maybe, it's probably not for tonight, but maybe at some point in time, it makes sense for you to kind of compare all of them and try to see where you can harmonize them and make them...
Yeah, that is the work that's going on in this process, yeah.
Okay. And one of the residents talked about the Caltrain parking lot, and actually, I heard a lot about this, that it's not very full, right? And is that true?
I, well, I have an interesting opinion on this. So, first, I should say that I believe we're leasing around 40 spaces from them currently, which somewhat does speak to the fact that it's not totally full, that they were willing to lease us 40 spaces. We use those spaces to mitigate some of the construction impacts, so we use it for some of our parking, for some of our construction work that's going on in California Avenue. But yeah, it's typically been lower utilization. We've surveyed it several times, we've actually talked to them about ways of increasing the usage. So, it's a conversation that I think we need to continue having, and we intend to continue having.
Because I heard that it's utilization's something like 40%. Does that sound about right, or?
So, I last surveyed it three years ago, so I'd hesitate to give you a number on that at this time.
Okay, but it seems like if there's, you know, a 40% utilized parking lot in that area, which, you know, there's lack of parking, it seems like, it sounds like you're already on it, which is great.
Yeah.
I'd love to hear your findings in terms of how to utilize it better.
So, yeah, I would say that right now is a really difficult time to try and do anything as, you know, we're obviously, we're already leasing spaces from them, and also from the courts across the street, and there's also parking impacts there. We were really interested to see what happens as we take away some of the free residential parking, you know, just across the tunnel, and see whether people who can't find parking and feel like, hey, this is too far for me to walk, I'm gonna just pay the $5.
Or could we, could, like, a deal be worked out where people who, you know, want to, like, maybe, you know, people who want to build the park, that don't have, can't buy enough permits, or can't buy a permit, can, can, there be some sort of joint Caltrain program that allows them to park, there is any other parking lot? I don't know, I mean, I'm just, this is not...
Yeah, these are discussions we've had in the past, and we would certainly like to continue, I would say.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. So, when, I get really concerned when I hear things spoken about consistency, and then it ties into, now there's this program where there is payment for each of the hang tags that the resident get. I'm hoping that down the line, as you create more consistency, what you talked about, community engagement and participation, that you do talk to the residents, if it is the intention of the city to make all the residents and all of the RPPs consistent where they're all paying for it, because it would be really something that I would be highly disappointed in if that's something that is gonna happen.
Yeah, so, not that I want to make a recommendation on this tonight, but my recommendation would be for it to be normal across the districts.
I'm just saying, right now, you know, with the consistency discussion, it draws great concern to me. Thank you.
Seeing no more lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously, 6-0, with Councilmember Niss Epstein. Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody in the, thank you to staff. Please convey our thanks to Mark, and thanks to the community for coming out. So, that was the final action item on the standard calendar, a standard agenda here. Is there any state or federal legislation update?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements? Councilmember Koo.
So, I, last week I did attend the League of Cities, California Cities, and you appointed me the delegate, so thank you so much. But I did not have to vote on Resolution 1, which was to underground the utilities in high-fired areas, because it was removed by the committees. And the second item was about ensuring that water, sewage is managed and not disposed into our rivers and lakes, because it will affect the entire community sooner or later. So, it was a unanimous, it was a great, big yes in moving forward on that. Attending the League of Cities Peninsula Division meeting that we had, we were told by the representative, who happens to be the vice chair, and that was Shirley Mazer from Redwood City. She basically said that SB 5 has been vetoed by the governor, because he doesn't see that there's a way to reimburse cities for the monies, for the money that would be taken out. He doesn't want to burden the state for compensating cities for lost revenue, but SB 5 was supposed to take money from property taxes in order to help with homelessness, and it would be backfilled by the general plan. In any case, the governor has vetoed that. SB 50 is coming back in January, and at this point, it does carve out smaller cities and smaller communities from having to adhere to SB 50. And the council member, the representative, has said that she would not, she would highly encourage not to exclude the smaller communities. But it is coming back in January. Then, they did talk about AB 1482, which is the rent control, the state, state rent control. And the concern over there is that a lot of the landlords are gonna be raising rents, and that we may see evictions. That hasn't come about yet, so, I mean, that, we haven't, actually, we did receive some notice from the community here in Palo Alto that that's happening, so there is a concern there, and I don't know what our staff can do in order to monitor that, but it's something that we should start monitoring. That's it from me. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, we will move on to our final item of the evening, which is a closed session related to performance evaluation for the city attorney. And I will move, we go into closed session for that.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Niss Epstein. So, we will go do that, and then we will adjourn. Thank you very much.